Let's call me into order, stamp for pledge please. Doug, for the honors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just take a moment please. Pay for our troops and for passing up a past chief of local fire department. Thank you. Okay. We're here to approve and adopt the April 11th meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
No.
Second.
Go in favor.
Aye.
Okay. And we have a new submittal here. Application ZB 24002 Homeland Towers, our Verizon friends. Hold on a second here, let me just read this here and then I'll ask you to come up. Seventy-three Route 9, parcel number 615400852538, in the general business zoning district on point on 4.03 acres. The applicant is requesting the following variances for the construction of a wireless communications facility, including 150-foot monopole to support equipment for Verizon Wireless and future co-locators. Rear yard setback of 31 feet, where 75 is the minimum setback in the GB zoning district. Said variance will result in a 44 rear set rear yard setback. The left side yard setback, 43 feet, where 75 feet is the minimum setback for the general business zoning district. Said variance will result in a 32-foot left yard setback. Said request are in violation of Town Official Code Section 150-126 L2C2. I don't know what if I said that correctly. This board will consider accepting the application and referring it to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, the New York State Department of Transportation, the Rombell Fire District, and the Phillips Town, the Town of Phillips Town zoning board appeals for their review and comments. This is not a public hearing, so there will be no input from the public at this evening. Public input will be allowed during the public hearing once it is set by this board. The board is in receipt of comments from the public we have here, which is accept which will be entered into the record, which are considered part of the record but are not considered a part of the public hearing record since the board has not yet set the public hearing for the application. Okay, sir, you're welcome to stand up and introduce yourself and try to sell us on this.
Nice to meet you all. My name is Doug Warden and I'm a partner in the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder.
Can you speak up please?
Yeah, sure. I'm a partner in the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder. I'm here tonight on behalf of Verizon Wireless and Homeland Towers. With me tonight from Homeland Towers is also Klaus Wimmer. We're here in connection with Homeland Towers efforts to obtain municipal authorizations to locate a 150-foot wireless telecommunications monopole on the on the subject property. Before we go too much further, I just want to confess that I am a little bit of a last-minute pinch hit here. My law partner, David Kenny, is going to be the attorney that will be attending meetings going forward. He has had a baby and he is involved in all the complexities that go along with that state of affairs.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So anyway, I will do my best. He has a much more exhaustive understanding of the application, but I will do my best. So the application requires a couple of approvals from the town, including special use permit and site plan approval from the from the planning board, and the two variances that were previously referenced by Mr. Chairman during the introduction from this board. They're both area variances. Before I proceed too much further, I just want to provide a little bit of context regarding these two variances. These are variances that we technically don't need in order for the process for the project to go forward. The reason we're here asking for them is because the the proposed pole is located towards the rear of the property. We did that on purpose because in doing so, we can take advantage of there's some existing buildings on the property that will screen the lower portions of the pole from, you know, to an extent from passersby and passing traffic. And so by moving it away from Route 9, we get the benefit of that and it's like it's it's less visually obtrusive. And the planning board right now is going through, you know, the whole SEACRO visual resource analysis and review, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why we're here. We wanted to move it back. We want it to be sort of good citizens. And it's a big property. Mr. Chairman, you might have referenced it as 4.4. That might be the lease area. I think the whole property is 9.9, but I could be I could be wrong. So we understand that the that not much can happen tonight by virtue of the fact that SEACRO hasn't even been done. In fact, the planning board hasn't even circulated its intent to be lead agency. I just brought up the certain materials that are required for that to be done tonight. Next is a planning board meeting is June 14th, I believe, and the 30 days that you have to let pass between circulation of the notice of intent and actually declaring intent to be leaded. The agency will not have passed by June 14th, so we don't have SEACRO. We don't even have the planning board declared themselves lead agency. But that being said, we can we did want to come up here, introduce the project and ask any questions that you might have to the best of our ability.
I have a bunch of questions, but I'll let you.
Go ahead.
Johnny, please. Do you want to start off? Yeah, any questions?
I do, but you can go ahead. You may have the same questions that I have.
Lead us.
Go for it.
Well, I'm. We've been down this road before, okay? One of the questions, this is a monopole, one of the questions I have is the guide wires for this thing.
Okay, so this is not.
We're going to be looking for that. That's what I'm going to be looking for.
Okay.
Okay. You don't have to answer this now, but you know, we would appreciate you guys come back and explain where these guide wires are.
No guide wires now.
The signal. Now, I understand there's a deficit here. This is a 5G, this is a 5G tower, I believe. And it seems to be that as the the generation of signals goes up, the signals get denser yet shorter. That's the impression I got, you know? I may be wrong, and I would like an explanation just for my own, you know, understanding of this, because that leads down the road where other towers are going to be. Okay? Is there going to be a need for more towers? Are there going to be a need for higher towers? You know, these are the questions that I'd like to understand, and it doesn't particularly apply for this application, but I think for future reference, you know, it would be helpful for me. You know, I did see on the graph the the area it's supposed to cover. Our firehouse right down here, we have very spotty Verizon coverage. Are you Verizon? Are you Verizon? And I would like to see better coverage there, and this is that firehouse is outside that that coverage. And I was wondering if there was boosters that could be onto that add those signals. Let's see. As I said about other towers, what were what would the expectations be where those other towers would be? I understand that there's all along the Route 9 corridor, there's there's coverage issues. Now, maybe not so much lower west, just lower Duchess here, but I understand down Phillips Town and so forth, there's a lot of coverage issues. And that doesn't, again, that doesn't imply this particular thing, but just for a general understanding, I think it's nice, it's it's good for the public to understand this too. Okay? Is there going to be a light on top of that?
I don't think so.
Does it require a light on top of that for airplanes or anything like that?
No, not below 199.
199 feet?
Yes, I said, empty FAA regulations.
Okay. Those are the questions I have written down here. I'm sure others will come along as we come along. Anybody else have any more questions?
I do, just one. You mentioned that you believe this property is nine acres, nine point something acres, not four. I know you, the answer is probably going to be yes, but I'm a little concerned about the size of these variances. Okay, they're they're pretty extreme. Have you really taken a good look at that piece of property? I know you've only leased four, four point something acres of it. Have you taken a good look at it and maybe you can reduce the size of these variances by relocating that, maybe leasing more property? Now, you don't have to answer that now unless you have the answer, but if not, you can bring it back to us next time.
Can you pull up the picture of the property and the location?
You will forgive me, I am not the audiovisual brains behind this outfit.
I will, because I've been in your boots, so that's perfectly fine.
See, I can help you out. What are you looking for, Ian?
Just the property. Let me see if I can find what page.
There was quite a few properties.
There was, and there was a specific page, though, that seemed to really kind of show.
I think it was nine other properties that you were.
Oh, hold on.
It was a lot of pictures of the properties that they tried to get.
They got no response back.
On page 130.
Of what report?
Oh, the 2024-05 zoning board, oh, I'm in the packet, I'm in the whole packet. The zoning board of appeals, full agenda 1765.
Yeah, see, I don't have the full agenda, I have the submission. I don't download the packet.
Hmm, all right. Well, it's custom soil resource report, soil map, Wies Pond, New York, 057. I don't know if that helps, but it's a good, it's a really good visual of exactly where we're talking about. It's got like orange.
Well, that's it, yeah. Klaus just had it up.
Oh, I was looking down at mine. You had it? No, that's not it.
What page was that in?
130.
It's in the entire packet, it's page 130.
Yeah, see, the problem is the packet doesn't help because when I send you the agenda, I send it from a Dropbox, from a packet, from the website, so it's not going to match.
Well, don't be so efficient, Danny.
Sorry. Can you go to the front and see what this report is? That's the problem. I don't know what this is.
That's part of the packet.
Again.
Yeah, I know. I just thought maybe the visual would help.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
While we look for that, my concern is the impact of the micro watts and the RF levels. How are they going to impact the people and the general public that is surrounding them? Like how? I know there's a certain amount allotted, I'm not familiar with that law, but I know that, you know, within those levels and the micro watts allotted, how are we going to monitor that? And then my next question for you, sorry, is I'm familiar with multiple towers. What they do is, for example, your Verizon, they'll be on top, then they'll let T-Mobile in, then they'll let Sprint in, et cetera, and, you know, the lower the chain, the chief, you know, that's why there's competitive rates in the cellphone industry. Do you plan on letting other companies join that tower if need be?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
So then that would increase the micro watts and the RF levels, right? I would imagine.
Yeah, I think I think I want to speak quickly to that. So we sent an RF emissions report indicating that we are fully compliant with, well compliant with the FCC requirements regarding that. And the town engaged in our emissions expert named Doug Fishman, and by the town, I mean the planning board. And the plant, he issued to the planning board a very, very detailed report, which he presented in detail at the last planning board meeting, confirming that we are well within the emissions requirements. With regard to any subsequent co-locating carriers and their impacts on the facility, any such carrier who comes on this facility has to come back before the town, the planning board, and, you know, who knows, maybe the zoning board to the extent that they deem it a, you know, intensification of a prior non-conforming use or something like that. They would have to come back and they would have to submit the same emissions reports and establish to Doug Fishman's, he's a well-respected professional, Doug Fishman's satisfaction. And Doug Fishman, yeah, he gave it a thumbs up. He said, this is the in the location that it needs to be and that this is the height that it needs to be in order to fill the significant gap in coverage that the proposed facility is looking to address.
Thank you.
So can you just point on here, just so that people can really, if you could point to where the tower is going to be exactly?
Oh, my God.
That's okay. Take your time.
It is right in the in between these two buildings here.
Right.
As Doug had mentioned, the intent was to push it back as far as possible from Route 9 and the corridor, and also take, these are two existing commercial buildings, and take advantage of these two buildings to basically screen the bottom third, if you will, of the tower and and kind of hide the equipment that's that comes through these towers.
And Klaus, will that much larger building, slightly to the east, will that also help screen it?
Oh, yeah, of course, well, of course, that that helps. And in addition, there are pine trees that you can see here that we are proposing to keep there, and, you know, they add to the screening also.
Yeah, I travel on a weekly, if not daily, basis rate pass there, so I'm quite familiar with that particular site. And yes, there's definitely things that might mitigate any visuals for the base. I believe that those two buildings are maybe two stories, right?
I believe so. I think they're probably 30, 35 feet or so.
And how high is the the base itself is not going to be two stories, correct?
No, that is, the equipment is typically does not exceed six feet.
It's seven foot two in height, I think.
Or, yeah.
There's a fence around.
And then there's an eight-foot fence.
Yeah. I mean, that's a really tight space, really super tight space between those two buildings and the edge of that property. I mean, how wide is the base itself?
The foundation of the tower typically is about 25 feet in diameter, maybe 30 feet. It depends on the geotech borings that have to be done.
And there's no concern, like, I mean, I have to be honest, the first thing that kind of popped into my mind is hopefully somebody, and there's a lot of workers that go in and out or around the building, has there been any record of things falling off the tower and drop? I mean, that would be of concern to me is, like, I don't know if that's something that happens, like, we were talking, I don't know, is that something that, has there been reports off of that?
I'm not aware of anything. I mean, maybe it did happen somewhere, I don't know. I've been doing telecom for a long time.
And you've not come across that?
Yeah, I haven't seen it. I wish you'd have.
There's no residential, is there any residential?
It's a budding quarry, so it's really a very good concern.
What's the closest resident, because I, you know, I know there's some residents who are concerned about this. What's the closest?
They are down here.
Yeah, I mean, they will definitely, it's going to be a visual impact on them for sure. For me, as an aside, and I do have other questions, as you know, and I'm happy to see that and hear that other, the boards have been mentioning the gateway into Fishkill and the comprehensive plan and that kind of thing. So this is our welcoming road, which needs some work, but so there is a historic monument that, in my opinion, finally has gotten some of the recognition that it deserves, which will be in the shadow of this gigantic tower. And there are, you know, other towers, I've been kind of up close on 84, if you travel east on 84, you'll pass, there's a tower that you're practically can touch, and they're huge. So the base, it's good that it would be hidden by those buildings, but in a sense, it's kind of bad that there's not really much that would mitigate being able to see this huge tower, because there's not, it's not like next to the mountain, it's not, you know, there's nothing, it's not tucking into anything, which I understand the tower, you don't want it to tuck into things, right? So that would kind of do me the purpose. So I myself don't have problems with my cell coverage going down there, and I'm a Verizon customer. I do see with some of the letters that were sent out, and I think that the initial letters that I had seen are acknowledgement of businesses, local businesses that you've reached out to, and I know you reached out to the village to see if there was any other location. I'm wondering specifically if Clemente Materials, you know, did they show any interest? You know, I was a little dismayed when some of the the response was, well, they didn't call me back. Any business person, you call and you call and you call and let them tell you no. So it's very easy for the message to get lost or whatever. So to me, I, it's very concerning to have that vast variance, that's a huge variance. It's concerning to me to have it so close to buildings where people are going in and out and conducting themselves. It is a business, it's not residential, but we also have gotten concern from residents that will be looking out their kitchen window, that was the one that we, looking out their kitchen window and seeing this gigantic tower.
So just two very quick things. The the planning board is, you know, they had many of the same same concerns, hey, you know, what's this going to look like? And so they have requested that we provide some alternative configurations, different paintings, can you do it, make it look like this, make it look like that? And so we are exploring that right now. We just met with them a few weeks ago. So as far, it's almost premature to go too deep into it because we don't know what it's going to look like right now. It could be painted differently, one one planning board member liked the idea of painting it brown and then green sleeves on top. Anyway, there, you know, there were a variety of different.
It's hard to hide 150 feet.
Yeah, of course, of course. And then my, another, two more points. I know I only said I had two points total. With regard to the monument there, I think we did refer this out to the State Historic Preservation Office. They didn't have any objection to that. And then, and I say that's not dispositive of everything, but it's a it's a strong indicator. And then the last, the last thing is, you know, this is a line of sight technology, and I think you even sort of touched on that, you know, if you if you can't see it, it doesn't provide service to you. It has to be, it has to be visible. And, you know, one good thing about this is because it is such a good location in terms of filling up, it's like a dish, it's like a bowl we're trying to fill up, that this would be a good place for future co-locating carriers to go, which would eliminate the need for unnecessary proliferation of other towers for the purpose of filling this particular significant gap in service. Again, it's a dish.
And I do just have one other comment, and you had mentioned that essentially, whatever we say doesn't matter because this is a public utility and you can, you're, I appreciate you're trying to be good neighbors, but ultimately, it doesn't really matter.
Well, no, I think, no, it matters, it matters. We want to work with you, we want to be good corporate neighbors.
It matters, but there's there are two things that we have to be cognizant of. And first was the shot clock, does that start tonight or is that started already?
I think.
That is being told. We, the planning board, was some concerns about the shot clock also, and we certainly have no objections of enforcing the shot clock. And so we had agreed to toll the shot clock, it's currently, or I think we told it for 90 days initially.
You can hold it for 90 days?
Yeah, I believe so. And it may now be, may have kicked in again, so but we are willing to, you know, toll it again if it may be. I think it goes to August, maybe, right now?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think it might be August also, I could be wrong. But the overriding point is we're here to work with you, we're not going to.
Right. And the other thing I wanted to point out, and there's a lot of concern about the the visual aspects and so forth, but I think it's got to be put on the record, how many 911 calls come from a cellphone, come from a cell tower? The percentage, and that's, and that has to be on the record, and that has to be very clear, because, you know, when you when you make a 911 call, you want that call to go through.
Yeah, that's a really, that's a very important point.
And this is, that's key here, in my opinion, and I want that also coming out, and that's what I'll be looking for also.
I'll tell you this, it's been, it's been a little while since I looked at the specific national number, but daily, this is years and years, I've been doing this for a while, years and years ago, it was like 900,000.
Yeah, I'm looking for a percentage, you know, and, you know.
I think it's 75, 80%.
Yeah, I think it's pretty, it's up there, it's up there. But that's got to be, and this is what I mean, the public is watching this, they're looking at this, you know, and there's a lot of concern about the visual aspects and everything, but then there's, you cannot override that, again, in my opinion, but that's got to be come out.
Ron, can I pick you back on that for a moment?
Sure.
Well, first of all, I mean, I feel like the only, I travel all over the place, whether it's locally or nationally, the only cellphone towers that I find are visually offensive are the ones that try to look like trees. The rest, I really, I don't notice them at all. But on Ron's point, I think, you know, there's a lot of, we're shifting in the way, we're going away from landlines. So this, in a way, I hate to say it's a necessary evil, but it's getting to be a necessary evil for a lot of reasons, emergency services, like Ron said, local businesses are also very reliant on their cell phones and their cellphone coverages, and I know in that area there are a lot of local businesses operating in that area. Also, the final thing that I kind of jotted down is that there's a lot of services lately, especially when you think about vets who need to get to the VA, and there's a new service in Duchess County. I can't remember the exact term, but it's for elderly citizens, where they're reliant on Uber and Lyft to take them to their doctor's appointments. And I know with those services, if they don't have the proper GPS signal, even if it's down to one bar on a GPS, you could lose your GPS. So it's very important for those citizens to have those services that Duchess County is providing to them, and it is very cellphone-based. So those are kind of the things that I just wanted to add on to Ron's point.
Yeah, so these are the things that I think should be, the engineers should bring forward to us, okay?
And I guess what is the rate of it, of those services not working in that area? You know, I mean, to that point, like.
There was a coverage map in the, yeah, and so it is, it does seem to be strong in some parts and spotty in others.
Is anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to take a lot of time because I realize this is somewhat of a formality at this point, but I just want to reiterate, obviously, the need, the need for it, the necessity of it, and of course, the concerns of the ISO for some of the residents in the area, and that's what my concern was as well.
Is there a limit of how many carriers can function off of one tower?
Well, there's a couple of things that that limit that. One is the number of carriers, and I don't, and that's a function of the frequencies that are that are that are available. I think there, am I right in thinking there's there's four main carriers right now?
Yes.
Yeah, and we have spots for four on this. They have to be separated out by 10 feet. So our, the top of the tower is 150 feet, but what we're really talking about is 147-foot center line for these for these ones. So we have 147 center line, and then there's another around 37 and 27, et cetera, et cetera. So there, those are, those are the the limits on the potential number of carriers.
And there's a limit, I think I read in here, right? So it's not, it's not like a carrier can come in and double the magnitude of what's being offered, correct? Like, there's a limit as to how much the tower can hold, so to speak?
There's a lot of limits, there's a, you know, I mean, there is a structural limit. There's a lot of limits, there's, you know, I mean, there is a structural limit, and another, there's also all kinds of, this town is, you have a good code, it's, you have regulatory limits too. And any, you know, I was kind of touching on this earlier, any subsequent carrier who comes in that wants to say, I want to go up there, they got to come in and they have to give the same RF emissions report, which would be reviewed by Doug Fishman, and then they have to give structural reports, make sure that this, this tower can structurally hold it. And they would also have to talk about visuals, what's it going to look like? Very much a similar thing to what we're doing. And then to the extent that we wanted to modify, I mean, if we do an in-kind replacement, let's say one panel is not working, that's one thing, but if we just, you know, we can't just come in and put double the number of antennas, we're going to come back here, just like any other business who's modifying, you know, pizza parlor is modifying the, you know, the front of the store, just like them, if we get variances, site plan approval, special use permit, we need modifications of those things, and the board needs to sign off on those.
What are the rights of the subsequent carriers if they get added to extend the tower upward?
They, I don't know that they really have rights, however, one of the things we were talking about before the planning board was this, this idea that, who knows, maybe it'll need to be subsequently extended, or should you build it higher just in case? We weren't really higher, comfortable building it higher just in case, so what we did is agree to build an extendable tower. So in the event at some future time, somebody has to come in and go, and go higher, they have to come back here, the pole could be extended, but they have to come back and get the appropriate authorizations from the municipality. Is that about right, Klaus?
Correct. We will build it, build a sign it so that it can be extended, you know, from a structural aspect.
So if they did go up, that would increase the variance, they'd have to come back before this board for additional variances?
Of course, but structurally, the tower would be able to handle it.
Yeah. And you wouldn't be the first municipality to deem an increase in height to be increasing an existing nonconformity that would require approval from all the boards that granted the, the original authorizations. Some municipalities don't do that, but.
I don't know if these are actually variance kinds of questions that we're asking, but, you know, it's a good education for us, you know.
That's what we're here for, we just want to, you know, we want to make everybody feel comfortable about what's, you know, what we're asking for and what's wrong with knowing a little bit about what's in your town.
Anybody else have any questions?
Not until you ask your question.
All right, should we, can I have a motion to accept or reject this application?
Motion to accept.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Let's see, the next zoning board of appeals meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 18th, with a deadline date of Tuesday, June 4th by 2:30 PM. Now, will that be the, the comment period, or would it be after the?
What kind of comment period I'm talking, are you talking about one, I'm sorry?
For the public, the public comment period.
Public comment doesn't happen until you set a public hearing.
And the public hearing, we can't set a public hearing until after the?
I would say when, I mean, I don't want to speak for our attorney here, but planning board hasn't closed SECR.
Until the planning, yeah, yeah.
But that's up to you, you can certainly open one up and keep it open, but it's kind of nice to try and keep everything.
Yeah, I would rather, rather not right now, because we will have people.
I would think you're going to want to get comments back from the people we send this application to.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's going to get circulated for GML.
Absolutely.
And there's some work to do with the planning board. Seems to me that.
It's got some work cut out for him.
Yeah, so.
I would be remissive.
Does the applicant have a preference in terms of, you know, timeframe and procedures with your view on the shot clock and knowing better than this board where you are at the planning board right now?
Well, I would be remissive, because if I didn't give it the old college try and respectfully request that this board schedule a public hearing, you know, it's good to get things going sooner, better.
You would like to have a public hearing for us here?
We always appreciate the feedback from everybody.
So you want to get beat up? I mean, you want?
What was happening on June 14th? I wrote that down, but I can't recall.
It's nothing yet, if yet, that's what we're figuring out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, these are the different ways, you want to hear your options?
The SECR has to be established before we.
So, you know, the board, this board can't act until the planning board completes SECR and issues, you know, a final SECR determination. That doesn't necessarily mean that you can't have a hearing ongoing and open while the planning board is also, you know, continuing its SECR review.
We just don't call it a public hearing, is that?
No, well, no, well, two things. You can have meetings and have informal feedback. It won't be published for public comment for a public hearing until you move to conduct a public hearing on X date. And once it's open, it's, you can, that date comes, it's published, and once it's open, it stays open for as long as you need it open, until there's a motion to close it. Once you close the hearing, then you have 62 days to make a determination. So what you want to make sure, the most important thing is that you're not closing a hearing before SECR is done, because you don't know what the SECR finding is going to be. And then you put yourself into a box where you've only got 62 days to decide. So there's a couple of different ways you could proceed. One, the applicant's, you know, kind of saying, hey, if you would, please give us a public hearing, not really necessarily expecting it. There's not a particular harm in scheduling a public hearing and opening it and then leaving it open. It's probably premature, in my view, but it's, it wouldn't be procedurally improper to do it. You know, you could vote now to open the public hearing, you know, schedule a public hearing for, you know, two months from now or three months from now. Or you could come back, probably most logically would be to come back.
I would rather wait for the SECR determination.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, have the applicant back for another meeting, where they can keep you abreast of what's happening at the planning board. And that way, you'll know when the right time is, when you're ready. They will have made enough progress, and they'll say, this is where we are at the planning board, this is how it's evolved, and, you know, you might at that point say, okay, we're ready for a public hearing, let's schedule it for next month, or let's schedule it for two months from now.
Let's, let's do that, okay? So we'll wait for your back to the planning board.
Okay, so June 18th with the June 4th at 2:30 PM submission date?
No, that's just the next meeting, that's not.
Yeah, no, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, June 18th is the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and June 4th, is any input to that meeting? Has to be at like 2:30 on June 4th.
Okay. Anything else we can, we can sort of give you guidance on?
Next time, bring pizza. Okay, I think that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, enjoy the night, it's beautiful.
Thank you.